migrate around over.
When new board members come, we do.
Yeah.
We have to make sure everything fits. And try to make it so there's representation all over rather than one community altogether.
Right.
I started over there.
You did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Welcome to our, hang on just a second, I need to put my agenda out here. May first. Welcome to our May first thing it is. Our May first meeting. It's been a beautiful couple of days, let's keep it up. Next to the last board meeting of this, of this school year and the next to the last for our superintendent. Yeah, regular meeting, I'm sure there'll be other meetings.
Sure.
Yes, so we will start with board member introductions, we'll start over this side.
Sean Foeck. Larry Manning.
Michelle Tucker.
Joanne O'Brien.
Megan Carlson.
Tony Pete.
Becky Fless.
Alyssa Tracy.
Linda Caputo.
Janelle McKinnon.
Jeff Henley.
Administrative staff.
Pat Hopkins, superintendent.
Senator Volik McNazak, Director of Special Services.
Josh Farr, Director of Adult Education.
Katie Gold, Principal at Helen Thompson School.
Lauren Arnold, Principal at Garden Area High School.
Nikki Dugay, Principal at Riverview Community School.
Sarah Sims, Principal at Gardner Regional Middle School.
Angela Hardy, Director of Curriculum.
Tiffany Hopwell, Principal at Pittston Randolph Consolidated School.
Karen Moody, Principal of Laura Richards School.
Andrea Dish, Business Manager.
Terry McGuire, Director of Technology.
We'd never gone around that way before. That's great, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance is given by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My little speech. Yep, public comment script. We're about to enter into the public comment period of our meeting. State law in Maine requires a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of the school board. Please note that the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion accordingly. Please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we're unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel, particular student matters, or rumors presented as facts that compromise the privacy of others. And any health or medical information protected is confidential. On any other matter of concern, we would ask for you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers address the comments directly to the board rather than to the audience. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school unit's programs, policies, or operations. In the unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess. The meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Please review our pamphlet, welcome to our school board meeting that provides a copy of policy BEDH, Public Participation at Board Meetings, that explicitly outlines the manner in which the public comment will be managed. Individuals who wish to speak are required to fill out the sign-in form, which is now up here. Those who wish to speak will be required to state their name and town and residence before beginning your remarks. Consistent with policy BEDH, the board will hear public comments from residents and employees of the school unit first. If there's time remaining in the public comment period, once all residents have had the opportunity to speak, the board will permit comments from non-residents. The board will now enter, entertain public comment for 20 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted two minutes. Alyssa Tracy is our timekeeper. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. So Jennifer Richardson.
Jennifer Richardson, I'm from Gardner. And I originally thought of something I wanted to say at the school board meeting and then I was kind of knocked off my center when I read this Facebook post of this like false conspiracy theory thing. And it was pretty upsetting and I kind of got off my focus. But I'm going to return to what I originally was going to talk about and that is how exceptional MSAD 11 was in my experience in education as a parent. I've taught at many schools in different cities and different states and there have always been groups, you know, with jocks, whatever. You know, each city has their own little labels or whatever. What I found to be amazing about Gardner is that everybody blended. And I don't know if it was my own daughter's class, honestly, they were an exceptional class. They started out being the class that they were like, oh my, you know, wait until you get this year. But then they ended up bringing the fire. And athletes took the play. They did camera and sound for plays. Play people went to cheer on the basketball people. They went to the volleyball games and the volleyball kids did, you know, programs for the like, they just did everything and there was no shame in trying and being different. And it was refreshing and I thought it was unique to Gardner. And I was grateful to be in that experience for that period of time. Again, my window is narrow.
Ten seconds.
So I'm hoping that can continue and we have a positive environment and stay away from the negative.
Thank you. Jen Scully.
Hello, excuse me, my name is Jen Scully and I'm a resident of Pittston. I have two children who attend MSAD 11 schools. Today I'm going to speak about transparency and communications. Parents and community members deserve to have their concerns heard respectfully by the school board, even when we disagree. Sadly, this is not always the case. Parents have contacted certain board members and have been told by a particular board member to grow up, seek help, you are the problem. Community members have been accused by this board member of gaslighting, making inappropriate gestures, lying and threatening. Some have even been told to never contact the board member again. Just this week, I posed a concern I had about a board member's questionable content that was posted on their MSAD 11 Facebook page. I was told by that board member I was disgusted and that I was unsafe to be around any child. Another community member was told, stand down or be knocked down. And other parents were referred to as groomers in a cancer that will never stop. This is not the way we expect board members to deal with concerned parents and community members. Elected officials should be able to model respect and handle discourse, not resort to insults or become accuser, no, excuse me, towards parents. We also expect board members to be truthful and comply with FOIA requests. Again, this is not always the case. I submitted a FOIA request asking for a board member email and social media communications with various outside groups that have been interfering with our district. And although I have screenshots of evidence of social media communication between some board members and these entities, several board members violated the FOIA request and did not submit these communications. If they are unwilling to submit even public communications, it makes me wonder what private correspondence has been happening between board members and these groups. Transparency and appropriate communication are essential for elected officials to do their job and to build trust with them.
Me too. Larissa, Carissa Wolves.
Good evening, my name is Carissa Wolf and I'm a resident of Gardner. I'm here, I'm here due to the misinformation being spread by one of the board members here tonight. This BM has shared to her Facebook, her MSAD 11 Facebook page, which is a public and government service page, a fake worksheet that she claims was distributed by a middle school here in Maine. She had not checked into the sources of where this document came from, but instead kept the post up even when people had presented evidence it was untrue. Instead of taking the post down, she's now resorted to calling parents and community members groomers for supporting transgender rights. This is not the first time this board member has spread information and probably won't be the last time. We are sick of her lies and her hateful attitude to the very community she was elected to represent. I strongly encourage the board to review how they are representing themselves in the community. Parents are outraged that to some of these board members, their children should not be allowed to express themselves. Ethics violations are constantly being committed and it's getting to the point where we as parents are fed up. If you cannot handle yourself professionally while on the school board, you need to step down. We need to flush these BMs out instead of smearing all the crap around. Thank you.
Fred Merrill.
Fred Merrill, West Gardner, 64 Hingley Road. I was just speaking about parents' rights. I, I think it's really easy for somebody to come in here, speak loudly, and accuse the board of taking away parents' rights. I believe that there are lots of people in the community that will believe it because they don't show up. Nobody's taking their rights away. They're not showing up to do their job as a parent. I show up. I'm a grandparent and I still show up. And you want to know what's going on in the school system, you have to put your face in there. When I was on the school board, I would go to kindergarten orientation classes and I would say some ungodly things, one of which was, I don't believe there's any bad students in our school system. I believe there's only two bad things, bad parents, bad teachers, or staff, as you would. My wife stopped going with me to those things. I think that everybody needs to do their job. School board members need to stand up, need to talk to the public, and the public needs to talk to you. I'm not really thrilled about coming here, but I am going to come here until things get straightened out. I don't like outside interference and I don't think school board members should be listening to it. Listen to us, we live here. I've been here for a long time, I'm not going anywhere. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Quincy.
You're up.
Hi, my name is Quincy, Quincy Merrill and I go to the Helen Thompson Elementary School in West Gardner. And there's so many things going on and school board members should not be insulting people in the community. They should not be saying insults. And they, they shouldn't be, you know, spreading rumors and lies. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Quincy, you're the reason we're here. Okay, and so we have time for Lisa Gagni.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Directors, and School Board Members. I'm a little nervous, so I'm sorry. My name is Lisa Gagni, I live in Belgrade and I'm here speaking in a leadership role with Parents' Rights in Education, Maine. I'm here to speak about Title IX and the critical choice that you're now facing, that this district is now facing. Across the state, districts responding differently to the unconstitutional 2024 Title IX revisions. Some like Wyndham-Louisdon have reverted to the 2020 version of Title IX but retain language referencing gender identity. This violates federal law and current regulations. This, the reason means federal funding is at risk. Others, including Augusta and Freeport, formally rescinded their 2024 changes altogether to not take advantage of the situation. And then there's SAD 70 in Hodgson, where board member Clarissa Porter made a motion to enforce Title IX as originally intended. The board voted unanimously to recognize only male and female in their district policy. All students still have access to resources that assist with their mental well-being. But governing requires the most objective language to avoid creating chilling effect among the student body. Sorry for my voice shaking. This proves districts have a choice, you have a choice. We urge you to protect children's privacies and their competitive sports. Please do not ignore your own students' petitions and the trend of recent local elections. Let's be clear, protecting girls' sports in private spaces is not hateful. It's the absolute best decision to protect all students and it's what Title IX was created to ensure. On behalf of the parents, teachers, taxpayers in your school district, we urge you to please place education, safety, and fairness first for every student.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have eight minutes left, we're all set. Don't have anyone else? Anybody else need to publicly speak? This is Chairman, but seeing none, we'll continue on. Thank you to everyone who bravely spoke tonight. Review and approval of agenda minutes. Thank you.
As Speaker, I want to make a motion under that issue. I'd like to add two items to the new business for this evening. One is to review our language in ACA AAA and to try to have a discussion about bringing us in line with Title IX. And the second item I want to bring up is, I would like to have another opinion, legal opinion on behavior in the school district and bring in another, another attorney to give us a legal opinion concerning all the events we're facing with Title IX and the loss of the money that is going to be paramount. So that's my motion, is that we add those two items to the agenda this evening on the new business.
Any questions or comments from other board members? Yes, Joanne?
Jeff, have you actually read Maine education law in terms of anti-bullying statute?
I haven't read the, I don't know what you mean, which exact law would it be? I mean, Title IX and the Maine Human Rights Commission?
What I'm saying is, is that in the anti-bullying statute, it says there is no bullying or harassment.
Point of order, this is not relevant to Jeff's motion.
No, it is because.
It's entirely different. Point of order, please, please move on that.
How do you know? You haven't let her finish her sentence.
Because she's talking about a bullying statute, he's talking about Title IX. There's two, it's two very different things. So if we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
The motion I made is to amend the agenda to add these two items.
Yes.
That's what we should be discussing.
And we have a motion on the floor.
Right, and my question is, is that.
And a second. So let's discuss if and when that gets added to the agenda. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adding these items to the agenda? I need to. Okay, I need you to keep your hands raised, please. Any opposed then? Oh, those opposed.
A point of order, under Robert's rules, the chairperson is not allowed to vote unless there's a tie. So I ask that you refrain from voting. Thank you.
That's not, that's not.
That is absolutely Robert's rule supporter.
Yeah, he's never been a practice, never.
It doesn't matter whether it's a practice, it is, we operate under Robert's rules.
Well, then why don't, then I would suggest that we recess and that we research that because that is not something that we've ever done. Our chair has always been allowed to vote.
Always.
We brought this up last meeting as well. I said the exact same thing last meeting as well, but I'm fully in support of recessing to look at the rules.
So let's do that.
I mean, that.
It's a tie anyways, so Becky would have to vote.
No, it's done.
It's done, it's a weighted vote.
Oh, it's the weighted vote. Right, 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 okay.
Joanne, Tracy, and Tony. That's, that is a tie, actually. That comes exactly 5,657 votes to 5,657 votes. So it works out to a tie exactly. So given what you're saying, she is allowed to vote and this is something that we're going to have to consult, our community research.
Yep.
You are allowed to vote, so your vote is.
I'm going to vote against doing that.
So it fails 5,657 to 6,806. I need to make sure I capture this correctly. Other changes to the agenda. A revision was sent out yesterday afternoon, so you can see those revisions, they were all in red. And then we have one more addition on page two. Under general information, see, we've added Alicia Black as a volunteer softball coach at the middle school. Thanks. Motion to approve the agenda as offered.
Motion to approve the agenda as offered with revision one and revision two.
Thank you. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor of moving forward with the agenda? Opposed?
Staying.
I'm staying, okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Janelle, was that abstaining or in favor?
I voted in favor.
Approval of the agenda minutes of previous meetings, the regular board meeting of April 10. Motion to approve. Sorry, who was that?
Me.
Second. Joanne? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Recognitions and celebrations. I want to start by giving a very public thank you to Matthew Lillybridge, who gave six years to the school board. Matthew is a friend, he is a fierce advocate for children. He's a parent, he's a veteran, he's been, in my opinion, very harshly judged. And I feel badly about that, I would hate to be judged by one action of my worst day. When my dad died, I would not be happy if I was judged that way for the rest of my life and in my community. I feel as though he has really served this board very well, in good times and in bad for him personally. I will miss his work and I will miss his honesty. He gave such great thought, asked such wonderful questions when we were working with students that were in crisis in this board and at this board. And I will miss that. He always was thoughtful and waited and I can't thank him enough for his six years of service to the board. So I just want to thank him for that publicly. I'd also like to welcome Janelle McKinnon. Janelle has decided that this is, these are the shoes she would like to fill. So welcome and I hope that you, I hope that you love it because this is good work and our representation for children is very, very necessary. Our kids need school boards and we can't do our work without families. So it's, this is, the work we do here is very important and welcome. Correspondents.
Yes, written. Thank you.
Committee reports, Capital Area Technical Center.
Yes, I was able to attend that meeting and I just have a brief update. The staff at CATC are beginning to prepare for next school year and so our students at the high school have been signing up for courses for next year. So this information was provided to us during the meeting. According to the numbers I was provided, we had 95 slots provided to students at Gardner Area High School. At the present time, we have 53 students who've signed up for those slots. In one particular program, the Electrical Technology Program, we actually have five students on a waiting list. And so there is the possibility that they may get in as they shuffle around slots, depending on other schools and how many students have signed up. So it was a great conversation and it was really good to see that we have students who are definitely beginning to sign up and who are interested. I'd like to see that number a little bit higher. But all in all, we were told, again, as I calculated the numbers, it looked like there'd be about 38 slots and there's still 165 slots available. So their numbers appear to be down a little bit. So hopefully, given, we still have a couple of months, our middle school students will be touring CATC later this month, which they do every year. So hopefully that will garner some interest. So once they're in high school and they're ready and of age to go to CATC, they will, they will have the interest of doing so. It's a great program, so. So that's about it.
Okey dokey. Always exciting to think about new stuff happening at CATC. Curriculum Committee.
Yes, ma'am. We met and the minutes were added in one of the revisions. Our last meeting was April 8th, it's included in the packet. We had new committee members there. We introduced some guests to give us some feedback on it, Interdisciplinary Literacy Initiative, which actually made it to the state's DOE webpage. Did some pretty amazing things, so I suggest folks read that and check out the article. There was a proposal to work towards the budget about co-curricular for band, which was not passed. And our next meeting is next week. I missed it, two weeks, 13th, I think.
Yep. Dropout prevention didn't meet. Finance Committee, April 1st, April 8th. In April 15th, we continued to work on the budget to get it to, down to single digits rather than go through all the little tiny details of it. I would encourage anyone in the public to please go in and watch our meetings. And remember that we have a referendum coming up and we will appreciate everyone's support. Policy Committee.
Sure, so we met on April 10th, right before our last full board meeting, as is our, is our custom. Let's see, our, you know, our process is to review, you know, we have, I don't know, probably, I think about 50 pages of policies or whatever and job descriptions other times. We've made some adjustments and so I have a couple sets of policies to bring forward for the board. One of, the first two listed there are to suspend our traditional procedural rules to forego a second read. So we want to have these implemented, actually to comply with changes to Title IX at the federal level and that's at the recommendation, sorry, of our attorneys.
And would you, let me explain the process that we use to bring these policies forward?
Oh, as far as like comparing language between.
Right, that these are the 220.
Yes, right.
The 2020.
I was going to say we compared, but really we're just going back to language that we had active since 2020. The last update we had done to these was in September, yes, September of 2024. So just last fall, we had done this update. Rules, the rules. Rules, uh, the rules changed and our attorneys recommended we, um, return to.
And rather than just rescinding, we had made other changes. We wanted to make sure that we were bringing forth the correct policies. So we grabbed the policies from two twenty and brought that forward through our process, um, like we do other policies. But it's virtually this equivalent to rescinding the twenty twenty-four policies.
So, and again, yes, this is the twenty twenty language that was very much in the, uh, agenda at the time.
Correct.
Um, let's see what the, we can do these as a bundle. We have the forego the second read and so just implement now. And then we have a first and second reading, uh, sets there. Um, uh, it's, should we do it as a full bundle or should we do it as three sets?
That's entirely up to, up to you guys.
If, if the board's okay, I'm happy to do it as one, you know, bundle so that, uh, those two go back to the twenty twenty, uh, language, um, foregoing the second read. Um, the next set is there, uh, here for a first reading, um, which is our traditional review of, um, of policies on our, on our cycle. So management of concussions, um, uh, the, uh, gen ed interventions and, uh, referral procedures for those interventions, uh, expulsion of students and then, uh, wellness, our policy on wellness. Um, and then for the second reading, so we saw this at the last board meeting, these are coming forward for the second reading. Um, the, uh, um, again, these are, um, the current policies as, uh, as recommended by our attorneys. We can see one, um, there's a couple, um, rescissions in there that we agreed to on the first reading. Um, those are for the, uh, the complaint procedures. There are A C double A R one and A C A B R one already in our policies that we're just getting rid of one set to keep this other that's, that's compliant with the law as our attorneys see it. And, uh, the rescission for, uh, pregnant students is also, uh, better encompassed in, uh, A C, which is coming forward for the second reading, the nondiscrimination piece. So I'd like to make a motion to accept, uh, those policies for the foregoing the second read, first reading and second reading, uh, as, um, as bundled.
Second. Questions or comments, concerns? All those in favor of passing the bundle?
Okay, just a second.
Point of order. Under Robert's rules, the chair doesn't vote unless there's a tie.
Um, I am getting some information on that right now from an attorney that actually says otherwise. So, um, that is something that we will have to continue to, to review. So. Time to go back in. Those who are in favor, would you please continue to have your hands raised?
Would you like it without my hand or with my hand?
Either right now.
Again, point of order, I would ask that the chair does not vote until it is fully clarified. Robert's Rules of Order clearly states the chairman's role is not to vote unless there's a tie. And if we don't have.
So I don't ever vote unless there's a tie?
That is what Robert's Rules of Order says.
Actually isn't, Michelle, that's incorrect.
So that is a point of order that we will look at.
That we will look at. Higher.
So right now.
Yeah, we're, we're checking it.
All right. So I have Linda, Megan, whether I have Becky or not, Joanne, Alyssa and Tony. And for no, those would raise their hand.
Those against this. And you're abstaining again, Jeff? Okay.
And what did you do, Becky? Did you vote or not?
Oh, I didn't vote.
I just take zero. Okay. So in that particular case, if Jeff abstains and you don't vote, then it is five to four. The actual vote is in favor, five, six, five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven to four thousand five hundred and eight. So it passes.
Guess he's leaving.
Good. Okay. Right. Wellness, I don't know that they met.
Wellness committee, no meeting, student reps.
I have a student rep report.
Um, is, is Kiara okay?
They both have tennis.
Tennis.
Oh, they're in a way.
Yeah.
Yeah. It goes on, they go on forever.
Yeah.
It's like a track.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was supposed to be scheduled for tomorrow, but because of the, um, anticipated weather forecast, that's supposed to rain, it was shifted to, to today. But I met with Kiara at the beginning of the week.
Oh, good, okay.
So, um, here's her report. The trip to Greece and Italy went very well. We just got off April break. Senior assassin is going strong.
If you see kids with goggles.
There's something with goggles. It's a game that they're playing. I, I don't know. Lauren, can you describe it? I read this and went, what?
This is a good tradition-based game for high school seniors. Um, they play it typically before graduation. So they're assigned a, a target and they must eliminate them by squirting them with a gun. So the, the swimming goggles. Water, sorry, sorry, water, water.
Water gun.
Um, so they wear their swimming goggles to keep them safe. They can't play it during the school day. It has to be up there in school. There's rules. Like they can't go to people's houses without being invited. There's all these preliminaries, but they are having the best time with it. And so you will see many of our seniors with swimming goggles on their head. Um, that means they're still in the game and whoever's left.
I wanna play.
Um, local scholarship applications were due today. Spring sports are going strong. Um, student reps, um, and myself. So both, uh, Sage and Kiara will meet with me tomorrow morning. Um, at seven thirty, there is going to be a meeting with the sophomore class, at which time we'll be talking about the student requisition. Um, so we'll need to replace Sage as she graduates. So that process begins tomorrow. Um, Abby Trask, Kiara Blodgett and Ella Crook will be competing in the state singles tournament on Saturday. So that's exciting. Congratulations to them. Uh, spirit week is next week. Prom is on May tenth. AP testing is coming up in the next two weeks and the interact club is hosting a craft fair at the high school from nine to three this Saturday for anyone who can attend. So that is the student report.
Thank you. Administrator reports. Who's on first?
Yoohoo. I didn't, I didn't hear it quite enough.
Right, noses. We do that at our house. So who's gonna do the dishes or who gets to choose dinner? Noses.
I'd rather do this in the dishes.
There you go. Me too.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. So elementary schools, L E R up first, noteworthy. Two second grade gla- two second grade classes have been working to make a difference in our community. Mrs. Kaiser's class has identified a food waste problem at L E R and has written letters to local businesses and the community to help find solutions, including a share table when donating scraps to a local farm for composting. Mrs. Grant's class has been collecting food for the Tiger pantry at Gardner High School throughout the month of April. This was initiated by students after meeting and discussing Last House on Market Street. Students wanted to help with food insecurity in our community. They have collected cereal, mac and cheese, peanut butter and jelly and granola bars. These classes show that even our younger students can make a big difference. Another noteworthy, during April break, their fire panel was replaced along with pull stations and fire alarms in the building and new emergency lights have begun to be installed throughout the school as well. Riverview, noteworthy. This month, all students will attend a performance by the Portland Symphony Orchestra, orchestra at the Merrill Auditorium. Thank you to Gepta for helping to defray the transportation costs. Also this month, our students will be joining station W M T W at Riverview and reporting the weather. This morning also includes a family muffin and coffee morning and an academic fair from seven to eight AM. Meteorologists will meet with third graders as part of their classroom curriculum to determine the weather in more detail later in the morning. So it's an exciting morning and it starts at six AM. If anybody would like to join, you're welcome to. Um, another noteworthy, um, we're able to finally announce that Mrs. O'Brien, one of our fifth grade teachers, has just been selected as a twenty twenty-five CrossFender Teacher Fellow. This fellowship is a professional learning opportunity for pre-K to twelve educators made possible through a collaboration between the National Geographic Society and the Lindblad Expeditions. Mrs. O'Brien will be traveling to the Galapagos Islands for a field-based experience that then she can then share with her students. We've kinda known a little bit about it, but we weren't allowed to announce it until it was announced through the whole fellowship. So this is her second fellowship, by the way. So she's, she's really, um, doing a lot. H T, noteworthy. Thirty-two students were nominated as most improved students by their teachers. These students nominated for improvement in academics, work habits or behavior. Each received a certificate and a free ticket to see a Portland Sea Dogs baseball game at Hadlock Field. We are happy to offer this award to our students and proud of their hard work. A challenge may is a busy time of year as we administer end of the year assessments for all grade levels in literacy, math assessments for K through five students and science assessments for fifth graders. While it's important to gather and analyze the end of the year data, we have a lot to squeeze in over these final weeks of a school year. And that's an understatement. Princeton Randolph Consolidated School, noteworthy. Ensuring that all the year-end field trips, events and assess- assessments fit seamlessly into our busy calendar. I like that word seamlessly. I use that one a little bit more. And Maxi for elementary.
The opposite of that is seamlessly.
There we go.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm gonna do the secondary. At the middle school, our sixth grader were able to go over to Johnson Hall for an incredible performance of Her Majesty's Secret Circus, which was a two-person show. A huge thank you to Johnson Hall for reaching out and providing this experience free for our students. Students had a wonderful time and came back really excited. Our staff also had their first underground spirit week, which brought about a lot of laughter and giggles with students as they tried to figure out what was going and, and what the theme was each day. It was very dead giveaway, the tissue box with your drink in it on anything but a cup day. But there was some creative stuff, some seriously creative stuff. It was insane, um, what people came up with. Um, but it was a fun way to get us ready to head into spring break. Um, this weekend, actually, right now is our middle school drama club performance of Paranormal High School. So I hope everybody goes out to see it. I got to go and do some directing with the kids last weekend. Um, it was, it's a lot of fun. Um, so the show's really coming together and again, getting excited about it. Challenge, end of year, fast approaching. Uh, so a lot of transition meetings are occurring, end of year events planned. Scheduling for next year has begun and students are definitely feeling the weather shift as this nice weather is coming. Um, it's just busy and an exciting one as we close out and we start beginning to plan for our next year. At the high school, the Gardner Area High School Interact Club proudly represented MSAD eleven at the Kennebec Valley Superintendent's Association Showcase. The students presented their Community Connections project, which emphasized the club's dedication to building strong relationships through service, outreach and collaboration with local organizations. Their presentation reflected the positive impact that our students are making in the Gardner area. In the spirit of community building, the Interact Club has also joined forces with the Student Library Committee, Junior Philanthropist Club and NHS to launch a reopening of the Tigers Den, a new outdoor workspace for students with honors or open campus privileges, which is hoping to open in mid-May. This collaborative effort showcases our students' commitment to creating inclusive and engaging spaces in our school. We also wrapped up a successful year of reading buddies where high schools, the students volunteered to read to H T elementary students during the library classes, which fostered not only a love of reading, but a connection across our schools. Over April vacation, a group of students had the incredible opportunity to travel to Italy and Greece. Photos and stories from this enriching trip will be shared very soon. Congratulations also to the Social Studies Department Chair Amber Dosti, who has been selected to participate in a prestigious professional learning experience aboard the USS Midway this July. This competitive program accepts only about twenty-five educators nationwide and Mrs. Dosti plans to bring back a wealth of knowledge, materials and photos to enhance her students' classroom experiences. Looking ahead, the N O E A dates are fast underway and our United Way Day of Caring, um, where seniors get back to the communities on May twenty eighth. The challenge, as the high school begins to enter the final stretch of the school year, there's a theme going as you can tell. We face the annual challenge of maintaining student focus and momentum through the last weeks of instruction. Balancing that with the complex work of filling next year's master schedule, coordinating a full calendar of end of year events, requires thoughtful planning, flexibility and collaboration. It's a demanding time, but also a rewarding one as we celebrate growth, honor achievements and lay the groundwork for another successful year ahead. In athle- in athletics, noteworthy, spring sports are underway at the high school and middle school. Our girls' basketball team was just recognized with winning the Ed Bear Sportsmanship Award, which is presented by the Certified Basketball Officials I A A B O Board Number Twenty. The challenge, at the time I am writing this, that would be Nate, not me. The high school baseball and softball teams have not been on their fields due to a lot of rain and poor field conditions. Getting transportation to away, um, contest has also been a challenge early on at this time. I was like, is you, would you like me to keep going?
No, I'm not.
I mean, I'll just keep reading.
I won't, if you want to, feel through.
I know you're not feeling super great. How about I do it and you save your throat? Okay. You can read the next one.
Happily.
All right, boards, system directors, technology, noteworthy, the twenty twenty-five Maine Learning Technology Initiative, M L T I. Student conferences in May is at the University of Maine in Orno. Is gonna be attended by students and staff from the Gardner Regional Middle School again this year. Participants will explore hands-on, cutting-edge technology topics, including 3D design, robotics, game design and much more. The challenge, preparing for the upcoming testing season is important. Each computer must be checked and have the recommended operating system required for each test. Student and class rosters organized and uploaded into test portals. Spare computers, chargers prepped and given to schools, login information like usernames and passwords provided to all staff and students, teacher training and support provided, et cetera. A successful testing season takes effort and we would like to thank those who work hard to make it happen. In special services, noteworthy, our onsite audit with the Maine Department of Education took place on April eighth. The department shared very positive feedback noting significant observable growth. While we won't receive the official audit results until late June, we are hopeful that this progress leads to an improvement in our monitoring tier. The challenge brings an exceptionally busy time as we work to wrap up the current school year, there's that theme again, while simultaneously attending C D S transition meetings, completing the associated paperwork and planning for E S Y extended school year services this summer. In nutrition, noteworthy, a big shout out to all of my staff. They are the best. They don't take a lot of time off. They do anything that is asked of them and they can make changes on the fly. Several schools have dietary restrictions for students and staff step up to get creative and make what they need. It's so true. They do some amazing stuff for some of our kids. The challenge, the end of the year is challenging. We try to use everything in our freezers and refrigerators so that we don't have it sit for two months. I have the best staff for not ordering too much and come up with meals to use with whatever we have on hand. Usually when we have a lot on hand, it's because we get food from the USDA and sometimes we just can't use it all by the end of the year.
Ta-da. That's it.
I love it. Thank you. Thank you. That was awesome. Keydo. Cell phone committee. I didn't open that one, but we had a meeting this week on Monday and we sent the policy to the policy committee.
That's what I'm gonna say.
I saw it happen. Yeah, right? I'm like, so I'll watch your meetings. I didn't get here and.
Yes, if you would like, actually, we had a, if I can just, yeah, tag on to this for a second. So we, we, uh, that was our, our sole policy review for, uh, for this month. And we had a, uh, great discussion, um, uh, so with, uh, with, uh, Sarah, with Dr. Sims and Angela Hardy, uh, who are also on the committee, um, to talk through that, uh, the process for generating that, um, that document. And it sounds like, you know, there's what, um, it's been a process and there's been, um, a lot of opinions and a lot of, um, uh, navigating, negotiating to get the policy that you brought forward. And we did appreciate, uh, definitely appreciated the committee's work because it was, um, um, well thought out. So let's see, I guess there's more I could add, but that'll actually be the. So let's see, I guess there's more I could add, but that'll actually be the policy report for next, but I can just jump on it right, right now. Um, so, so yeah, we looked at, uh, kind of the stakeholder groups, um, which were, um, so, um, parents, students, and staff. Um, and it sounds like there were surveys that went out, uh, including that, uh, not, there were narrative components to those surveys. I think I picked them on. So there was a lot of detail that, uh, came out of those, um, uh, seeking that, um, people's opinions and thoughts about this. Um, some, I think some groups were on the, you know, no changes. Some groups were on, yes, let's very much have a ban. Um, this, uh, policy represents, uh, solid compromise. Uh, it does have phones, um, you know, surrendered in each academic classroom, but, uh, clearly delineated times when, when students can have access to them, including in between classes, uh, lunchtime, um, and, uh, um, maybe a few other spots. Some spots are identified zone-wise, uh, as red zones, so academic classes, uh, restrooms, uh, learn rooms, not, not permitted. Um, and, uh, it seemed, again, well, um, well thought out with a good sense of how it could start to be implemented, but not necessarily the, the specifics of what each teacher would do in there. That'll be up to each classroom, um, but there'll be a, a consistent, you know, place to put the phones and, uh, oh, the other thing that, uh, came out was sort of in eliciting the student responses was that those, I think the students were pretty honest in their responses, what they're using the phones for and how they're, uh, how they're accessing them. Uh, and so there was good, uh, insight and sharing that way. Um, and then the, uh, a little bit anecdotal piece, but sort of recognizing the, this policy's coming about in order to address an area of concern, um, which has interrupted academic time in particular, uh, as well as, uh, social interaction. But, um, one of the counts was, I think, about eighty, uh, interruptions in a class of whatever, twenty or something, uh, in a fifty-five minute period. And so that's more than one zzz a minute. And we all know, uh, how challenging that can be to ignore those, and especially for, uh, developing brains. So, uh, as a committee, we voted to bring that forward to, uh, to the full board for next month. So again, thank you to the, uh, um, to the cell phone committee for their work.
Excellent. Thank you, Tony. And thank you to the cell phone committee. Uh, job, uh, general information, pass, resume. Uh, staff transfers. I was looking for the none.
I know.
Uh, new hires.
Yeah, so these are nominations that do require board action. Um, these are individuals who are either first-year probationary teachers, second-year probationary teachers, or if they're shifting from probationary status to continuing contracts. So they would be going into their third year with the school district. Then we have administrative contracts, and as you know, they kind of rotate on, uh, either a two-year or a one-year, um, depending where, where they are in that process. Um, so some of the one-years are because they're probationary. They've had one year. They need another year. Um, so, and others who are just in the cycle of getting a two-year and/or maybe getting off of probationary status and moving to a two-year contract. So I would move all of these. I would request that the board, um, move these forwards and accept them as provided.
We would like to make a motion to move them all forward as a bundle. So we'll just hope. Carry forward. Okay, Melissa, and go ahead. Motion and second. Uh, questions, comments from board members? All those.
Can you just clarify that again? I was kind of lost.
Clarify.
What we're going on right now. Uh, I'm, I was somewhere else. I'm sorry.
So what's happening right now is that we have, if you, if you're looking at your agenda, um, you will see that there is, um, a first, there's first-year probationary teachers, then there's second-year probationary teachers, and then there's continuing contracts. That happens at, at three years, you become, um, if, if your contract is renewed at three years, then you are, um, you are no longer probationary. You are, um, you, you are here now until you choose not to be. So what the superintendent was asking for us to do is to move this as a bundle, all of these. And that's where we're at.
Oh, that's good.
Sure. So, motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Seeing no opposition, um, motion carries. I'm sorry. That's, that's, sorry. New business. Move to call and approve the warrants of the budget validation referendum and to authorize the notice amounts adopted. So Michelle, you're gonna make that motion?
I moved that the vote entitled vote to call and approve the warrant for the budget meeting and the budget validation referendum and to authorize the notice for amounts adopted be approved in form presented to this meeting and then a copy of said vote be included within minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Tony. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you.
Latin Club. Latin Club.
Oh yeah, this is their spring convention. They go there for two days and.
So you made the modification to your policy that required that when they're overnight, whether it requires board approval versus just board notification.
Gotcha.
So.
So moved.
Uh, second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Old Business Nun. Board chair report. Um, I would like to, um, I'll talk with you just briefly about, um, I, I am a member of the National School Boards Association Board of Directors, and we have several conferences per year. Um, no local dollars pay for me to attend any of these things. No taxpayer dollars go there. Um, I was in Atlanta two weeks ago and I brought back some books, um, that I will pass around and anybody is welcome to thumb through them. Um, we have presentations from, uh, anywhere from, um, a really bright and, um, gifted superintendent to a presentation from the Bacon Brothers. Um, and there's always an athlete of some sort. Um, and, and it's, it's, it's a great opportunity to be together with probably three thousand, between three and four thousand school board members from all across the country for four or five days, um, to, um, indulge in, um, extra learning experiences for school board members, how to, how to be better school board members. It's not, uh, there's no, it's an opportunity, I can only, I can say it's an opportunity where we're all together and it's fairly, there's nothing political about it. There's no agenda about it. It's all about how to do better for kids and what's best practice in schools. And I have a copy of a curriculum that was given out and I honestly, and which was free of charge, to look at. I'm not a curriculum person, so I'll probably be handing this over to, to, um, to Angela. This curriculum is in favor of finding the genius in every child, um, genius and joy. Um, and it was a wonderful speaker. Um, another thing that we, uh, went over was what school boards used to be responsible for. We go over this all the time, and I have ordered one of these for all of you, and I would really love it if you would hang it somewhere in your home. So when public education began.
Holy cow.
We were responsible for what's at the top. Now you go to the bottom.
Holy cow.
Yes. So we want to know why things change. It's not just about, it's not about the sexy stuff. It's about the stuff that helps kids learn. So I've ordered one for everyone.
Thank you.
And if you throw it away, that's on you, but there will be a quiz randomly.
Okay.
Um, I have another one of these hanging in my office at home because I regularly need to be reminded of why things are as complicated as they are. And this is just one of the reasons why. I also asked Terry, when I'll pass these books around, so they're for everyone and everyone can have a look. I'll send, I'll send them this way, just, you know, move them around. I asked Terry if she would just put up, so this year on the screen, uh, the National School Boards Association, um, turned eighty-five. And it's looking pretty young. Uh, that there is, uh, the Bacon Brothers. That is the, um, event room when the Bacon Brothers were presenting. Um, and this is just, this is our delegate assembly, which is sort of like what happens in your House of Representatives where, um, or our delegate assembly that we do at our fall conferences, the very same thing as that. So we create resolutions that are, um, hopefully in the best interest of students. Uh, we have a committee that works really hard and diligently on that throughout the year. Um, that is our exhibition hall where, um, vendors, just like at our main, um, main school management fall conference come, but they, these folks come from all over the country to, uh, present. Oh, there's some really cool things. The one cool thing that I wanted to come back here, that's just some attendees, some fellow school board members. They have a, um, there's a book vending machine.
Oh yeah, Scholastic has those.
So cool.
Yeah.
So rather than giving, you know, food snacks or a pencil or whatever, when you do something great in your class, you get to go to the, to the book vending machine and put in your tokens and get a book. And they have them all the way up through high school, and they're very popular across the country. I have the business card. I think that we should bring it here and have a vending machine. Because we want to be number one, if Fred was still here, we want to be number one in reading. We want to, we want to encourage kids to want to learn. So, um, I enjoy this work. I'm very grateful to be able to go to these, to the, to be a member of the National School Boards Board of Directors. Um, and I just need to share that with you guys so you know what I do and how important it is for all of us to, um, appreciate the families that help us to be able to be part of public education. So that's my report.
Yes.
That's a question. Could any school board member go? Or is he not?
So, yes, yes. And if you're, so Maine is a member state and we pay a small fee to the National School Boards Association by comparison to other states. Um, and yes, if our district could afford to send you, you could go. Um, I am able to go because I'm on the National School Boards Board of Directors. So that's how I am able to go and it's, and it's, my fees are paid. Um, but yes, anybody can go.
Um, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, no, anybody can go.
Pay for yourself.
If you wanted to pay for yourself and if you, if you, um, if you're interested, if anybody's interested in that, let me know because they, there is a period of time where you can sign up and you get deep discounts so that you can participate. And, and if you know you want to go, for instance, our next convention that we're going to is, is a, it's CUBE, and that's Council of Urban Boards of Education. And that's going to be in Los Angeles in September. And the airfare right now to Los Angeles is two hundred and seventy-four dollars round trip. So it's, it's not an expensive thing to do. Depends on if you want to go, if you're gonna go. I, I shop cheap. I, you know, I go to all the websites. I never buy from the airline. Um, so that helps the organization to not have to pay high airfares and I do the economy flights. And so, yes, anybody can go. Yes. And, and there are member states, not every state is a member.
July eighteenth, it says.
Pardon me?
July eighteen.
There you go. So everybody check it out if you're interested. It's so, it's just fascinating, um, the, to be able to spend three or four days with other school board members who are doing the same sorts of things, battling the same sorts of issues, having to, um, Maine's different in a way, um, in that we, um, we answer to the legislature. Many other states answer to the parents, the people that voted for them, and the state of Maine is not that way. Um, so there's rich conversation around that kind of regularly. But, um, it's just a great opportunity to be with other school board members who are doing the same thing, watching out for what's best for kids. And I, I am very grateful to be able to, um, have been able to do that. Any other questions? Good. Okay. Uh, let's see. Oh, school board day at the State House was last week and there was a fairly, and Megan didn't come. It's cringing. Um, it was okay. It was a great day. Um, we got to, um, uh, see the Senate do some of its work. We got to see the House of Representatives do some of its work. Um, we met with the governor for, um, probably, I don't know, half an hour we sat with her. Um, and, and that was, we talked about the key issues that everybody's concerned about and everybody's wondering about. We talked about all of that and how we find ourselves where we are. Um, and it, it's just good. It's good to have conversation. Um, and I know that, uh, there's a mixed, uh, review and, um, appreciation for our governor, but that's okay. She's our governor and that's, she's doing her best and she's following what she believes is the right thing to do. So that was that. And then board protocols. So we're gonna, Tony and I have been visiting a little bit, um, and really wanting to kind of, uh, get back to basics about what we're doing in this boardroom. And I'm gonna let you chime in too, but when our attorney was here and he did, um, our board orientation, you know, he, he basically said, you guys are elected, and so now you have to figure out how to work together. And no matter what, um, no matter what, I will say this. I said this to Pat two days ago. Pat, I have worked with you for sixteen years. I have no idea what your political affiliation is. I have no idea. And I wouldn't even guess because that wouldn't be kind. I just know that you love kids and that you would do anything to help a child to be who they were born to be. That's what we're supposed to do here. So our politics don't matter. Our politics don't belong in this room. Um, and, and our feelings about, uh, parents' rights in education, take that to school. That's where the parents are. Parents have all the rights. They already have them, use them. And I appreciate so much Fred. I've known Fred for twenty-five years because he was on the board when I came on the board. And he gets it. And we need to go back and we need to know why we're here. Um, and if, and if you don't want to be here for that, and if you want to be here for the, because you don't believe we're doing what's right for kids, please stop. Because it's in our constitution. This is what we're here to do, like it or not. This is what we're here to do. And if you don't want your kids to know certain things, tell them you don't want them to know them. They're yours. They're your kids. You don't want them to read a book? Tell them not to read a book. You tell them. You're their parent. We don't want to parent your kids. I promise. I already did mine. I continue to do mine. My young adult kids. They're my kids and we work on family values all the time. Parents work on family values. The school board doesn't want to do your family values. We want to create a, uh, an educational structure that includes every single student, no matter what they look like, no matter what they dress like, no matter their hair, their shoes, their coats, their whatever. We're here. Our job is every single one regardless. We don't get to pick.
So.
I give it to you.
So part of it, yeah, part of the coming back to basics idea is around the orientation that we've all done. Uh, and, and just to kind of keep revisiting that, I think part of that was something I noticed as I was, you know, uh, attending an orientation piece, that we all are here for a common purpose. Uh, we do have common ground and that's to advocate for the students in this district, for public education for the students in this district. And that is right in our, uh, our mission statement. And I, we thought it was good, I think it's good, to continue to revisit again that common area. And we may have different approaches and different thoughts of what that is, but we do have this common ground to be here for, uh, for these students in this public education setting. And I think it's important to not, um, allow that to get lost in, you know, I'm looking at whatever hundreds of policies we have and, you know, um, amazing, uh, staff and curriculum, uh, you know, deployment that we do, uh, every year with, with thousands of students. Uh, and I want to make sure that we're able to keep centering that, uh, in, in our discussions. Uh, and I want to make sure that we're able to keep centering that, uh, in, in our discussions. Um, and I know that sometimes we get into specifics and that, that at times is our job. Uh, at other times, so we're really to create this thirty thousand foot view and to operate, uh, I, I was kind of thinking of it as the machinery that we have, these policies that we sometimes, uh, inherit, sometimes create, um, that we bring this, these pieces forward, find where it's working, find where we need to change it, adapt it, and make sure that it's working so that our highly qualified people, staff that we hire, uh, or that the superintendent hires, um, can do that. Um, and we need to see how that is working. Um, and so we need to be knowledgeable about how the machine works. Uh, I maybe hesitate a little bit with saying machine because we're not cogs in a machine. We're people doing this very, uh, uh, organic thing. We're not producing widgets, right? We're, we're producing, uh, um, educated students. We're producing citizens. The other part that we look at, I mean, there's a, there's a bunch of different parts. Obviously the finances of, of how we do this. Um, and then the curriculum, which is, you know, a little more, um, uh, uh, you know, implemented every day, whereas the policies are a little bit more like the framework on which those pieces, uh, those pieces act. So our thought, I think, is to promote all of us being active in recognizing and reviewing and thinking about our common ground, uh, that way. So, so one of the things that would be probably good to do, actually, we're, um, I was wondering if we could actually do an overhead. It's a little bit specific, which is to make sure that if someone comes to us in the community as a, as a board member, um, we can direct them to where the policies are so that we can navigate our own website and we can direct people to how to find the information they're looking for. Or maybe we help them find it somehow. Part of that being like, we want to make sure that we are using our policies and our structures when issues, uh, come up because we do want to promote that, uh, connection between students and teachers and parents and teachers and guardians and teachers. Um, and make sure that there is good communication that way. And we want to make sure people are able to start at that level. Um, and I would imagine every instance or almost every instance, uh, to the classroom teacher or other staff member there, uh, and then to the, uh, the, the building administrator. Um, and to the extent that there are issues, like if something's not working, yes, as the board, we need to know about that. But actually, as a, a lot of our role as the board is to generate these things and kind of set them free, right? To release them, um, um, for use. So that's maybe a little bit my framework of how this system operates. But I think it is, it fits with what these schools, uh, what our schools are doing and what we've been doing. And, um, again, um, for, for decades and decades, uh, that, again, these are not policies that we created everyone from scratch. We inherit them. We are stewards of, uh, stewards of, uh, these policies and curriculum and stewards of the law that, um, provides our, our existence. So maybe as a homework thing, maybe that's the way we can do it is everybody.
We did talk about homework.
Yeah.
Everybody needs a little homework.
To make sure that we can all go to the website and find our policies and find our, uh, um, you know, even just the, uh, uh, find the table of contents page. It's actually all listed there really well, but it's, I, I bring that up. I'm the chair of policy, so I might, my bias on that, I guess, a little bit. But in, in that role, I've both become more familiar with how that's laid out and I'm still working on it as a work in progress for me. But one of the things I've noticed being on the board is that people have questions that are answered by those policies. And we can, we, we can best what, um, empower people to do that by to, by finding those policies and then going through that, uh, that classroom building and then board level process. Um, I think that part is really clear that we are that sort of last resort and our, our job is to be at that, um, again, that thirty thousand foot view. Um, I know we all want to be involved, um, and, but this is the way we do it from that, that remove, uh, in that sense. So that was our thought in, in creating the, uh, the, um, a little, a little protocol, a little board homework. But if we can all take time to go in and, and make sure we can find it on the website and make sure that, and if we have any, uh, challenges, I think Terry will actually lean on you. But I mean, I can find it as well. But, um, we have Terry McGuire, who is our Director of Technology, who has set up the website. So she would be a good for us to be able to make sure we can do that. And we can check in with the superintendent if it's a challenge to find. But, um, if that's all right, I'd like to challenge or, you know, promote everybody to, to do a little homework to make sure they can navigate, uh, through that and find where those are.
And we have an app too. And we have an app.
And we have an app. Thank you.
Do board members know that we have an app?
No. I'm familiar with the website, but I did not know we have an app.
We have an app. Pretty much mirrors it, yeah. It does. Yeah, it's a orange pop print. It's aptogy, right? Is that, it's aptogy. Yep. Or M S A D eleven. And, um, it, it has a condensed, because it's on your phone. But it's condensed. It's everything that's on our website is, is in the app.
I just wanted to say, I'm glad you brought up that Maine is different than a lot of school, uh, state's school boards because I taught in New Jersey and we had an appointed board by the mayor. All right? Other people have different methods to have board members come on. And we're responsive to different entities. And in our case, we are responsive to the Maine state education law. And our policies come from that. We get them through the lawyers. And that's why we have to become familiar with our policies because otherwise we can't do our jobs. And, um, I'm glad you brought that up, that it's different here in Maine.
It is. Some states you have to have a degree in order to serve on a school board. Some states you earn a salary for being on a school board.
What's that?
What's a salary? We don't get that. But yeah, it's, um, most, I don't know two states that are identical. Um, I do know that, um, in just about everything, every state, it's local decision-making or local control for, for education. So it's fascinating to me. So thank you. And, um, policies make great bedtime reading.
And they make great bedtime reading.
You can get through the first section and we don't want to deprive any parent of the opportunity to familiarize themselves with our policies and how things are supposed to work. We want parents to know, this is how it works. This is why we do the things we do. It's not because, it's for no other reason. I can't even make up a reason. It's the, the, it's for no other reason than we are legislated to do it that way. So it's our structure. And good structure makes good leadership, maybe? Makes something good, I hope. So that's, yes, please, board members, familiarize yourselves. Parents watching, constituents watching. Go to our website and read our policies. We got one for everything.
We, we do. It's, it's comprehensive. I'd just like to add one thing to the school board stay at the State House.
Yes.
If I could.
Oh, yes.
You know, maybe point a prologue, so I appreciate the board.
Absolutely.
Uh, I was there as well that day, had an opportunity to be there. And, uh, I thought it was gonna be a fast thing and it was not.
It was not. All day, all day.
Bit. Um, uh, one of the parts, and we did get to, yeah, see the different, you know, houses, the different chambers, uh, uh, in action. Um, and part of it though was, uh, for each chamber to, you know, had a, um, an agenda point of extending their appreciation to the school board members that were there. So, uh, from a range of, of school boards, uh, around the state. And I'm, I want to just make sure that I'm extending that to each of you. So I was there. It was actually pretty nice to get some applause, right? Just to recognize our work, right? So, uh, I know that, that, and I wasn't even expecting that. I'm like, oh, well, that's actually pretty nice. And then I realized, hey, this isn't just for me. This is for all of us, uh, that, uh, that do this work. Um, and so even, uh, you know, not being there was not the, the, the point. The point is that, um, you know, the legislature, the main legislature recognizes, um, the effort we're putting forward as elected officials and as, you know, largely volunteers, uh, to do this work and, uh, they extended that appreciation. I want to make sure that, um, we all heard it as a group because that applause, um, was for all of us.
Thank you. You're absolutely right. Thank you, Tony. Yeah. From Kennebunk to Baileyville. You know who was there from Baileyville. So, yes.
I do.
It was a good range, yeah.
It was a great range. Um, and it's, again, it's always just great to be with other school board members who are doing the same thing for the same reasons. So that was, it was really a great day and I hope more of you will come next year. It's always during, um, the spring break week. Which was why I couldn't go. That's, no judgment.
I had to pick up Fred at lacrosse.
Oh, lacrosse. We should talk. Jake is coaching lacrosse in Golden. Oh, middle school.
Hey now.
Yeah. What's that?
Is it hey now?
Hey now, right? Uh, let's see. Superintendent?
Yes.
Your turn.
All right. I have a few updates. One, last month I had mentioned to you that we had formed a committee who was looking into hiring a new principal at the Helen Thompson School. Um, interviews were conducted, um, and it was decided that that time not to really move forward with, uh, the committee. So we did not bring anyone forward to you for consideration and we reopened the position. Uh, we have, uh, interview tomorrow. Um, so we'll see, we'll see how that proceeds. Um, and I believe Ryan, Linda and Molly, um, are your representatives to, to that committee. Okay. Um, Pittston Randolph Consolidated School, there is an anticipated opening for that principalship position. Um, so I think we are looking to go back into the classroom. So, um, that's where Tiffany's harvest. Um, so we've begun advertising for an anticipated position there. So I will keep you posted. Um, at the beginning of the school year, the administration worked closely with the Teachers Association, uh, regarding some concerns regarding student and staff safety. So we created a safety committee. Out of that came, um, a proposal to put forth a bill in front of the legislature. We worked very closely with our local legislators. Um, and we did put forth a bill, L D twelve forty-eight. And that bill was, um, presented in front of the Ed Committee last Wednesday. Um, Vicky and I and a couple of teachers from, um, Pittston Randolph School were present and we testified on behalf, um, of that bill. And it really focuses on the restraint and seclusion policy and giving us just a little more flexibility to usher a student out of a very public place um, and into, um, some places a little more quiet and confidential to maintain their integrity, their dignity, but also to make sure that we keep the learning environment for every other student safe. Um, so that is going through the process and we'll see. But thank you to Vicky, uh, during vacation, giving up an afternoon. Um, and the teachers, um, giving up an afternoon to spend at the legislature was appreciated. Um, all right. I thought it would be helpful to take a couple of minutes, um, just to review the Title IX funding update. There's been a lot of information put out there. Um, and so I shared with you prior to this meeting. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it. You saw it in your email. Um, it was a priority notice that went out from the Department of Education. Um, and what they tried to do was to clarify how federal education funding really flows into Maine. So that funding for, uh, federal dollars, it goes through the state. Um, it does not come directly to school districts. Um, so if the state, if school districts modify their Title IX policies to align with the executive order, that does not mean that school districts will receive the federal funding because all the funding goes through the state. There is no mechanism in place for the funding to be directed directly to school districts. Um, this priority notice also talks about Maine human rights. What is Maine human rights? Based on the interpretation, um, that they have, schools, um, are, um, required, allowed to, um, let me go back here. Um, that Maine human rights prohibits discrimination based on sex or gender identity in school athletic programs. Maine human rights has interpreted, um, that requiring schools to allow students to compete on a single-sex gender team based upon their, um, identity, based upon the interpretation. Um, the Maine Principals Association by law states that the transgender student shall be eligible and therefore, um, we are required to follow, um, that policy. What is Title IX? Title IX prohibits certain discrimination in school athletic programs such as access, resource allocation and scheduling. Federal courts have determined that allowing transgender students to participate in athletic programs in accordance with their gender identi- uh, identity complies with Title IX and recent presidential executive orders addressing the participation of transgender student athletic programs, uh, which do not have the force of law, do not alter obligation of the schools to comply with the Maine human rights and Title IX. Therefore, school districts, um, are able to comply with both. It is not an either or. Um, and then we had mentioned the title, or I had mentioned the Title VI certification, um, at the last meeting and, um, that's, uh, let's see. That was not signed, um, by the Department of Education. Um, and so, uh, the federal courts on the twenty-fourth, three federal courts issued injunctions blocking the U S Department of Ed from enforcing its February fourteenth year colleague letter um, subsequent to Title VI certification requirements, which were related to diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, and so as a result, um, used is prohibited from enforcing its letter in any way. So that's kind of where it stands. That's the information that we received from the Department of Education. I have copies. So I emailed it to all of you. Um, but if you want hard copies, I have that too. Um, if you want that, I will just, um, pass that along. So I just thought that that would be helpful for everyone's.
Thank you.
Um, then graduation. Graduation is just around the corner. It is on June fourteenth. It's at the Civic Center at five P M. It is one of the best things that, that we do, right? We spend all of these years supporting our students. And so graduation is the culmination of that event. I would hope, um, that as many board members as possible, um, is able to attend. It's a Saturday, um, again, five o'clock, um, at the Civic Center. You also have a budget hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at six o'clock. That's also at the high school. That is in the gym. That's where the public comes in. Um, and they vote on the individual motions. I'm sorry, the individual warrants. So if you can please mark your calendar, if you don't already have, May twenty-seventh at six o'clock. And you need to arrive early because you need to make sure that you sign in with, um, the town clerks so that you're able to vote, right? Um, so there's that. Then the final thing that I have is that I do have Robert's Rules. And this is Robert's Rules of Order. It is called a Q and A forum that comes directly from Robert's Rules. And it says, it is, is it true that the president can vote only to break a tie? No, it is not true that the president can vote only to break a tie. If the president is a member of the voting body, he or she has exactly the same rights and privileges as all other members have, including the right to make motions, to speak and debate and to vote on all questions. So in meetings of a small board where there are not more than about a dozen board members present and in meetings of a committee, the presiding officer may exercise these rights and privileges as fully as any other member. However, the impartiality required of the presiding officer in any other type of assembly, especially a large one, precludes exercising the right to make motions or speak and debate while presiding and also requires refraining from voting except when the vote is a ballot or whenever his or her vote, uh, that the result. So because this is a voting body, she does have the right to vote. So that is.
Robert's Rules? Or are you reading an opinion?
Robert's Rules. That's what I said at the beginning.
It's the Robert's Rules.
Robert's Rules of Orders. Question and answer. Question and answer form. It's directly from them.
You're not reading directly from the actual document of Robert's Rules, so we can table that. I'd be happy to bring the actual section in next time.
Well, I'm going to follow, we're going to follow this. And we will get an official opinion from our attorney. But we also have the school board, Maine School Board Association. And in the rules there, it also says that the school board, every member of the public body, including the chair, has a duty to express a choice or preference of their vote, but legally can abstain from voting. An abstention is a non-expression and cannot be considered a vote in favor of or against a motion. Board members should abstain from voting only in situations where they have a direct interest in the matter under consideration. So again, that also says that the chair does have the ability to vote. So we will get an official notice from or opinion from our attorney. But this is directly from Robert's Rules. So that is my report.
Can I just ask one question about the abstaining?
Yes.
Does that mean that abstaining is something that should only happen when the person actually has like a specific reason to abstain? So it's not just something that you do when you don't want to vote?
You're elected to do something.
So you have to vote one way or the other? You can't.
Okay. So here's what I would typically do. Right. In the situation where someone abstains. I know why Jeff abstained tonight. That was really clear.
Okay.
If we're having a conversation about something and you haven't participated, you haven't, you might have the answer we didn't think of.
Right.
So abstaining, I might ask you, why are you abstaining? You can abstain. But it's really the reason you're here is you were elected to be here and you're elected to participate and share what knowledge you have. And if we're discussing something that's difficult, you might have the answer that nobody else has thought of. So an abstention doesn't help.
Right.
So, and it's not just your opinion either. It's, it's what do you know? What can you bring and what can you help us all to understand better?
Right.
And if after all that is said and done, you still feel as though you need to abstain because you just can't bring yourself to go one way or the other, that's fine. I might still ask you, but I'll do it nicely.
Yeah, that's what I just want to be clear about because I felt like there was, I, I hadn't seen much abstaining, abstention happening until fairly recently. And so I wasn't used to it. And I wanted to make sure that it was for everybody to know exactly why it was used.
Absolutely. And we're all here for the same reason. We were all elected. In fact, I was elected to have an opinion too. So it would be shocking to me that I'm not allowed to vote. Because I've done this for a long time and I've, I've had a lot of training. So anyway, it's not about me. It's about how we operate and we're all elected to do, to to represent the children of this district. That's our job. And to know things, to do our homework, to know our policies, to read our policies, to do our work, to do our due diligence, to earn this position. It's not just luck. It's, it's really that we have work to do. And I want to appreciate that everyone's going to do that work. So thank you for the question.
That is my.
Thank you, Pam.
So if we're ready to go into executive session.
So now it's executive session time. Thank you all for being here. I hope it met all your entertainment needs for the evening.
There's dog hair on the seat because Murray went in the cardio.
Yeah. So.
That's a train, it's just a train, train wreck, train, train wreck in here.
We are back.
We're back.
We're back.
Okay, slowly. I would like to motion to approve the modification of the superintendent's contract as recommended by leadership.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Great.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion carries. And that's all we have for tonight, folks.
We're moved to turn.
Yeah, de be de be de be, that's all, folks.